Okay, if not, we'll take that.
I can hear, are you, can you hear me?
You know why?
Can you hear me? I can hear you, yes. Can you hear me? Hello? It's not muted. It's not muted. Yeah, it's not muted, though.
Erica, you don't need much.
You can hear me?
I brought some more bread in case you.
It was so delicious.
I gave her some when I came.
So, so good.
Hi, Cindy.
I'm gonna click it. That's what I already did. Three, four, five.
So it's not just a resolution.
Good afternoon, board members, college staff, visitors, welcome. The time is 6:00 PM on this, the 31st day of January 2024. And I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. If I can have Mr. Delgado with a prayer and Mr. Rangel with a pledge of allegiance, please. Will you all rise?
Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts. And we thank you today for all of your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, for all of our faculty, our staff, and our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to lead with integrity so that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us a humility to always seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mrs. Ramos, could you please call roll?
Yes, ma'am. Lupita Cepeda.
Present.
Jorge J. Delgado.
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Erica Benavides Garcia.
Present.
Sendiliendo.
Present.
Mercurio Martinez Jr.
Absent.
Esteban Rangel.
Present.
Karina Lisondo.
Present.
Tita Cantubela. Absent. You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramos. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. The next item we have is the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of December 14th. So I hear a motion.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Rangel. I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion?
No.
None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Tita Cantu Vela in attendance. Next item is number four, public testimony. Do we have any? The next item we have is item number five, recognitions, introductions of personnel, and new personnel actions for the month. We have 5A, Texas Transfer Framework Field of Study Discipline Specific Subcommittee for Communication Selection, Dr. Oracio Salinas.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, Dr. Ramirez, colleagues. I'm here to present to you Ana Lou Ramirez, who is our communications instructor here at the college. She was recently selected to participate in the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board in the field of study of communication. This is a very important appointment for two years where she and other partners from the state of Texas, both community college select individuals and university partners, come together to create a field of study in communication so that our students who are interested in that field are able to take this field of study along with the core curriculum and then transfer to any state institution without losing credit. So, without further ado, Ana Ramirez.
Madam President, if I may add, this recommendation for Ms. Ramirez to represent Laredo College, the commissioner of higher education requested participants to be nominated, people to be nominated in the state of Texas. We quickly put together her packet and nominated her for this position. So, of all the community colleges in Texas, which everyone submitted one or two names, we were one of the fortunate ones to have been, get a candidate selected. They only selected 15 members to this, this group. So, we're very fortunate and that she's going to represent us and we know she's going to do an incredible job. So, thank you. If you'll come up for your certificate. Congratulations.
Congratulations again. The next item we have is 5B, Percenter for the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, THECB, Higher Ed Edge 2023, Leading Texas Future Conference. Topic was Leveraging the Power of Texas Through Open Education. Dr. Roberto Hernandez.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, Dr. Ramirez, colleagues. For the next two items, I'd like to call up Dr. Elizabeth Rodriguez to the podium. Through Open Education Resources, or OER, the college continues to remove barriers to higher education. This agenda item recognizes Dr. Elizabeth Rodriguez, a major driving force behind OER here at the college. Specifically, we recognize Dr. Rodriguez for having been selected by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board's Assistant Commissioner for the Digital Learning Division to present at the 2023 Texas Higher Education Conference that was held in December. In her presentation titled Leveraging the Power of Texas Through Open Education, Dr. Rodriguez focused on the transformative efforts and remarkable progress being made at Laredo College and integrating OER into course curriculums. Her insights shed light on the practical application and impact of OER and enhancing educational access and affordability for Laredo College students and the community. Dr. Rodriguez's selection is a testament to her expertise in the field of open education and her commitment to advancing higher education in Texas and to student success. I want to add that these initiatives at first are obviously a great benefit, but they're also a bit disruptive because of the change and the uncertainty. And why, and that's why it's so important to have a strong leader leading the initiative, and we have that in Dr. Rodriguez. So this is to recognize her being selected to present at this conference.
Do you want to do 5C as well? Because it's the same person.
Oh, okay. So, congratulations on that. And then let me go to 5C. The THECB Program Chair Selection to 2024 Open Education Conference, Dr. Roberto Hernandez.
Yes, so we continue with the accolades and we want to go recognize once again Dr. Elizabeth Rodriguez for being appointed this time by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, Digital Learning Department, to serve as the Chair of the Program Review Committee for the upcoming Open Texas 2024 Virtual Conference. The Open Texas Conference, which is an annual event, is a collaborative effort between THECB and the Texas Digital Library. It aims to bring together a diverse group of professionals such as librarians, faculty, administrators, and advocates involved in open education across Texas. In this role, Dr. Rodriguez will undertake key responsibilities, including developing the theme description for the conference, securing keynote speakers for the event, deciding on presentation formats, producing, publishing, and promoting a call for proposals for the conference sessions. Once again, this is a testament to Dr. Rodriguez's expertise in the field of digital learning and open education. Through her commitment and leadership, and with the board's unwavering support, Laredo College is being showcased across the state as a leader in OER.
And just to add to that, at this point, we're at about 75% of all of our courses are already on OERs and it's through her and her committee's leadership that we're doing that. And by this fall, the goal is to have 100% of our courses on open educational resources so that students don't have to pay for books anymore.
Congratulations. Next item is 5D, Texas Workforce Commission Adult Education and Literacy Award, Missandra Cortez.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Ramirez, board members, and colleagues. I am here to present about our AEO program that this past December at the Texas Workforce Commission Conference was awarded $75,000 for being a best-in-class program, placing first out of 28 grantees from within the whole state of Texas. This award is a performance-driven quality award focused on a grant recipient's performance toward meeting targeted measures such as measurable skills gains, achieved credentials, and enrollment targets. I am very proud to acknowledge the group and the team that provides this service to our community. I'm truly, truly proud of them. If you all please stand. The whole group is here, so.
And they got the big check.
It was a great feeling when you're first in the whole state of Texas, so.
Yes, definitely. Yes. No. I think it's a different one.
Just for someone to grab the award. Can you hire this for the general and the word this? Would you be able to move over to the front? All right, ready? Big pile, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Congratulations again, everybody.
Thank you.
So the next item is 5E, THECB, Texas Reskilling and Upskilling Through Education True Grant Award, Missandra Cortez.
Yes, thank you. So, the Continuing Education Department applied for a grant through Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, the true grant, which is Texas Reskilling and Upskilling Through Education. And we were awarded this grant through the Continuing Ed Department by Ms. Brenda Martinez and Mr. Miguel Flores.
Good evening, Brenda Martinez, for the record. As Ms. Cortez mentioned, we did apply for the grant and under this grant, the Continuing Education Department will be able to provide high-demand training programs to a total of 70 participants. The CE programs were selected from the current target occupation list provided by the Workforce Solutions for South Texas Five-Year Strategic Plan. Programs and the number of participants include 30 patient care technicians and 40 registered dental assistants. In addition to the program certifications, and students will earn micro-credentials such as EKG certification, personability soft skills, and HIPAA compliance. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Miguel Flores, Senior Workforce Development Coordinator for the department, as well as Mr. Gabriel Lozano, Director of Grants, and Ms. Susana Carrion, Restricted Grants Manager, for assisting in the development and proposal of this grant, and of course, to all of you for your support. Thank you so much.
How much money, Brenda?
$248,000.
Wow.
Yes, thank you.
You want to take a picture, Brenda? All right. That way you can put it up in your, in your department. The next item is 5F, Workforce Development Center, Rio South Texas Coast Step Foundation Grant, Missandra Cortez.
Yes, thank you. So finally, the Workforce Development Center was applied for a Rio South Texas Coast Step Foundation Grant called Start to Finish. This grant was applied through this foundation by the Workforce Development Center by Ms. Denise Flores and Mr. Javier Gutierrez, and we were awarded this grant as well.
How much was this grant for?
Denise will provide the details.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Denise Flores, Workforce Development Center Director. And on my side over here, I have Mr. Javier Gutierrez, our Associate Director for Employer Initiatives. So I am thrilled to share that the Workforce Development Center has recently received a grant for $132,515 to provide training to integrated education training students. Now, this, the program selected for this grant were patient care technician, dental assistant, professional truck driving, bookkeeping and payroll certification, office management, and QuickBooks. Additionally, not only will this cover the tuition and fees for the students, but we will also be providing career support to the students, meaning that we will be employment tracking. We will be providing career advising. So there's a lot more job bears. There's a lot more to this grant, so we definitely want to make it a very beneficial and experiential learning process for the students as well. And ultimately, our goal is to empower our students to secure employment and transition seamlessly from continuing ed to academic programs. So, that's the path we're.
Picture?
I want a picture too.
They want a picture.
Do I need to sign it? Actually, they're going to grab a picture next week. They're going to get the. What is it? Yes, the eight, the glory eight. This concludes my presentation. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is 5G, Selection of Quality Matters Academic Advisory Council Member, Dr. Elizabeth Rodriguez.
Good evening again, Elizabeth Rodriguez, Dean of Academic Innovation and Technology. Good evening to everybody. So I wanted to present Ms. Alicia Rodriguez. She's not my, she's not my relative. She's our director for the eLearning Center and she was recently selected to serve on the Quality Matters Academic Advisory Council. And so, as you know, Laredo College has been a member, a subscribing member of Quality Matters since fall of 2016. And Quality Matters is the institution that we use to vet our online courses. So we use their standards to review our online courses and to make sure that our online and hybrid courses are to the highest standard. And so, the Advisory Council was established in 2004 and it provides guidance and advice for problematic directions at initiatives and academic standards of QM Quality Matters. The QMAC includes up to 15 members representing QM subscriber institutions and organizations, educated-related organizations, including those with partnerships with QM, and e-learning leaders who provide a national perspective. And so, just briefly, some of the responsibilities is representing LC's interests as it pertains to the Quality Matters Program. And so now, we're going to have somebody sitting at the table. It also, some of the, one of the other responsibilities is advising on national and international distance education developments relevant to QM organization, reviewing new and revised QM policies. And so, there's a lot more of, but I don't want to take too much of the time. But we're very proud of Ali being selected. She was selected unanimously. We submitted her application and her resume and the work that she's been doing as it pertains to online courses. Her appointment is for three years, and so we're very proud of her work.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Is she going to take a picture?
If you want her picture.
Ready? One, two, three. One more, one, two, three.
I think so, no, right?
Yes.
Yes. Next.
Congratulations again. Next item is five H, Introduction of Personnel, Personnel Actions, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Thank you, Madam President. And we, we have some very exciting news to share. We have five, well, five new hires, six, one could not be here today. But as I introduce you, will you all come forward? So new hires, we have Veteran Services Coordinator, Ms. Monica Molina. Monica, are you here? Instructional Assistant Continuing Education Cassandra Vella. Payroll Manager Elizabeth Barrera. Patrol Officer Ricardo Tanguma. Lead Activity Director, this is one of our new grants, Elaine Almanza Ortega. And Homeland Security Emergency Management Director and Homeland Security Studies Instructor Manuel J. Maciel. You all want to take a picture with us, folks? By the way, Mr. Maciel used to be faculty and has been promoted to, to the Director of the Homeland Security Program. So we're really excited about his leadership and certainly his experience here.
By the way, we're going to take a huge group picture of everybody that's here outside after the board. And welcome.
So don't leave anybody, no.
Welcome to the LC family. Next item is number six, Faculty Senate Report. I understand Mrs. Kelly is.
She's out sick, ma'am.
She's out sick.
Yes.
Do we have anybody? No?
No.
So I'll go to the next item, number seven. Laredo College Student Government Association Report, Ms. Anna Gigi Pérez Arleman.
Good evening, everyone, Dr. Minita Ramirez and Bor, Ramirez and Board Members. I hope everyone is doing good today. First of all, as the President of the Student Government Association, I want to let you all know that the student body is very thankful to the college administration for closing campus during inclement weather for the safety of, of the students. Moving on, the Office of Student Life hosted Welcome Week.
One more.
Regardless, regardless of the inclement weather, the students enjoyed activities to welcome this new semester. We had a Lotería where students were able to win Laredo College merch. We also had a good time during the cookout. We spent time together eating delicious hot dogs and hamburgers. Students really enjoyed having a free meal and playing Lotería. Laredo College Clubs and Organizations had their first Student Organizations Council Meeting. We had development opportunity for leaders. We learned about Robert's Rules of Order to achieve effective meetings in the future. Last Friday, January twenty-sixth, LC SGA had a meeting to make changes on our constitution. We also had a TJ CSDA Region Six meeting where the advisor-elect and historians are from our college. Raimundo Gonzalez, our SGA Vice President, is historian. I'm sorry. He's historian for Region Six. He is also in charge of creating a new website for the Region Six. And our SGA advisor, Pedro Rivera, is advisor-elect for this region. In this meeting, we talked about the big event that is going to take place on March twenty-third. This was, this was an idea from our college. We will be creating pantry bags for the elderly citizens of our community. And I am very proud that our college is being more, more involved in Region Six this year. We want to go with new ideas to the next DJ CSDA Convention on April, from the twenty-four to the twenty-eight in Austin. We are also planning on travel on COSCA on April, the, the fifth to the sixth, to the seventh, I'm sorry. Moving on, I want to inform that the LC SGA President and Vice President will be participating at the WBCA parades. We are proud to represent our college. Also, LC SDA officers will be participating during Fun Fest. We will be having a booth where members of the community will be helping us out to make candy bags and notes for children. Everything collected will be donated to the Sacred Heart Children's Home. And lastly, esports held tryouts on January twenty-two and twenty-third. Thank you for your time.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you, Didi. Thank you for the report. Next item is number eight, Classified Staff Council Report, Mr. Sam Talat.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, President of the Board, Ms. Lupita Cepeda, Laredo College President, Dr. Minita Ramirez, Administration of Staff. Thank you for allowing me this time to present. For the record, my name is Santo Ad, and I'm here to represent the Classified Staff Council. I'll try to make this short and sweet for you all, so I don't take too much of your time.
That's okay.
January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, I had a productive meeting with Dr. Minita Ramirez, the President of Laredo College. We discussed, our discussion discussed centered around positive changes to enhance our classified staff organization. We explored ways to improve communication and increase participation among our classified staff members. One of several subjects was the fact that we wanted to change our name from Classified Staff Organization. And I'm proud to announce to you all today, we made such a move. So now, from Classified Staff Organization, we will now be known as Staff Senate.
Staff Senate. Oh, very nice.
Nice.
Moving forward, I will continue to have regular meetings with President Ramirez every other Thursday to address concerns or suggestions from our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Finally, I'd like to extend an invitation to you all with February right around the corner. We will have, we will be hosting our Fun Fest Saturday, February the twenty-fourth, from twelve to five. We are literally considering on selling hot dogs, depending whether they will let us or not. For the most part, I hope to see you guys there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for continuing your dedication and participation, participation towards our organization.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Next item we have is a consent item.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel.
Yes, Madam Chair. These were all discussed in the Finance and Building Committee. I motion to approve items nine, eight, B, C, D, E. Second.
So I have a, a motion by Mr. Rangel, I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is number ten, Discussion on Possible Action. We have ten A, Appointing an Individual to Represent the Laredo College District as a Member of the Board of Directors of the City of Laredo Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, Tier's Number Two, also known as the Cove's at Winfield. Ms. Lupita Cepeda. Chair recognizes Ms. Ramos. Ms. Ramos.
Ms. Cepeda, if I'm in order, I would like to make a motion to appoint yourself as a Chair of the, of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to serve and the Tier's Number Two, also known as the Cove's at Winfield. My motion is, is, as, as it states.
So I have a motion. I have a second by Ms. Garcia and Mrs. Vela. Any discussion? And the only thing I'm going to, I'm going to state is that the reason we're having to do this is that I've talked to Mr. Martinez, and due to his health, he hasn't been able to attend. And I try attending to represent the college, but it has to be appointed by the, by the college board. We just can't show up and be there. So thank you for the confidence, the vote of confidence. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment on that item?
Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
Just for the, just for the record, in the past, representation from Laredo College to this organization always fell in the hands of the President of the Board. So I think there was a small time period there where the President of Laredo College did it, but, but it should, it, it was always in the hands of the Board President. So thank you all very much for doing that.
Thank you. Ten B is Approval of Donation of College District Property from the Fernando Salinas Trust Donation Inventory from sixteen-twenty Clark to nonprofit organizations for less than fair market value, as per Laredo College Policy, C I B Local. Equipment and Supplies Management Disposable of Property, three A. The predominant purpose of the alternative method of disposal is to accomplish a public purpose, not to benefit private parties. Dr. Diana Y. Ortiz.
Good evening, Madam President, Board, Dr. Ramirez, LC Leadership, of course, members of the community and LC staff. Today I come before you to ask for the approval of the donation of college district property, in particular, the Fernando Salinas Trust, below market valid, value to nonprofit organizations. That I am asking that the Board approve the disposal of furniture, artwork, equipment, and alike, things that have, have been gifted to us through the foundation and others alike for less than fair market value to nonprofit organizations who could benefit from such items. So we are interested in affording some of these items to organizations like Habitat, like Casa Misericordia, anybody that's a nonprofit that could really benefit from some of these items that maybe for the college might not be of necessary interest, because we've used many of them, but certainly made available, not to one particular nonprofit, but many nonprofits that might have a need in benefiting from some of these items. So in January twenty twenty-three, the Fernando Salinas Trust, as you all know, gifted Laredo College sixteen-twenty Clark with all of its contents, including many of these things that I have mentioned. Laredo College has used many of those items, and many of them are being deemed to be made available to the community nonprofits, and in the future, maybe even to our, our community public. We would like to make some of the items that Laredo College will not be using available to the local nonprofits, whose mission is to support the underserved community. So there is no budget consider, budgetary consideration, and I'm just asking for approval to move forward, not for any one particular nonprofit, but certainly nonprofits that could benefit from using these items as we deem necessary based on what the item is.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Be, before I, I go to the motion, I had two raise their hands, two board members. So the first one is Ms. Elisa.
Um, my question, who and how, uh, who's going to determine which nonprofits are going to get what? And who will be making those determinations?
That would be, that would be me in line with the President. And of course, the President, oh, I mean, the President reviews many of these items and discussions with, with the Board President. Certainly, however, if we need to have a proof process or procedure established, we will do that. But I will tell you that what we have done so far, I personally reached out to one of the nonprofits that I thought was going to be the best benefactor at the time, which was the Habitat for Humanity. But I didn't want to limit everything to Habitat to Humanity, and certainly wanted to make it available to all nonprofits. Certainly, the goal is for the college to benefit from all the furniture, equipment, and items first, of which many of the items that you see, the benches that you see here that have been painted, the furniture that you see in the Commander's Home at the chapel, outside of the West Building, in the MFA, at the VPA, and at the South Campus thus far, have come from the home. So the idea is to furnish within and then take it, take it to the community. And I just want to have the, the support of the Board, because this project is very daunting. It's an extremely, extremely taxing undertaking. It, it, it includes, you know, property inventory, the people at facilities, the people that are here at on campus. And I just would like to be able to have the authority to make it open to nonprofit organizations that benefit.
I just want this process to be fair to everyone, because I don't want it to get into that habit. It's who you know, or based on, on the knowledge that only two individuals have of the needs of certain organizations. Maybe, I don't know about the procedures that have been discussed, or is there anything that you all have in mind? Or it's pretty much, I know this organization and.
If I may, the idea was we were going to just put everything in the case and center, announce it to everybody, and have like an open house, and it'd be on a first come, first served basis. Because a lot of, what's left is not really appropriate for the college use, and somebody else may be able to use that. We wanted to do, open it up first internally to employees and, and staff. And then whatever was left would then be open to the community or public to come in and, and profit from.
Yeah, I just don't want to have any complaints from.
Right.
I want it to be fair.
And certainly, at, up until this point, we have tried to be extremely intentional, extremely purposeful, and mindful of the nonprofits that, that are out there, but making it available to the community through the big, the casin would, would be fine. It's just going to require a lot of transportation, because these items, many of you have already seen. Some of you have seen, we still have five buildings here within this college that have items. And we have inventoried every piece. Mr. Vela has been given a report of every single item, and his division has been part of the process. The idea is not to, in particular, name any one nonprofit, but certainly may open it up to all nonprofits that might be able to benefit, that are working on the underserved population that could benefit from the item.
Are there any artifacts that are worth more than what it's required for the Board to approve? Or since it's going to be.
Not, not, no. The, the, the college is the benefactor of most of those items. We are looking at having formal auctions in the future of some additional items, so the college can be the benefactor of the funding, as the gift was intended, from the donor.
Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
I know you had mentioned that you all have it open for faculty, staff. And just out of curiosity, is it also open to students?
At, at this time, the, the goal is to do that. We have not done that. We are on hold, because currently, as you all know, there is an inventory taking place campus-wide at both campuses. So it has put us at a stand. So it has put us at a standstill for the moment. We are, the goal is to fulfill all the buildings that we have here first at this college and at the South. The next thing would be to open it up to Board. The next thing would be to open it up to leadership. Then all of the Laredo College family, students, public, and then nonprofits.
And with these nonprofits is, are these, or is anybody within our faculty, staff, and most importantly, the students, are they directed to, I guess, some of these nonprofits?
None of those, uh, initiatives have actually been started as of yet. We are still in the process of inventorying all the items. One of the things that I can commend the entire team for doing is that unlike other donations that were gifted to the community that had just one big garage sale and everybody show up and not really understanding the value, we have been able to repurpose and re re, I don't know, I just.
Redo.
Revalue. I mean, to give everything a value.
Revalue.
Yeah.
The the buildings that we've been able to service here. And again, the intent for this request is not for any one particular nonprofit. It is for nonprofits that are serving the underserved community and might be able to benefit from some of these items.
No, and and thank you all for all your hard work, especially Dr. Ramirez and everybody on the team that's associated with it, because I know every time we get updates, it's not, it's not an easy task, especially to inventory every single item. So thank you for all, all that y'all have done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
I think I recall a couple months ago that there's one of people for after finding to embrace all the articles and maybe for the next meeting, we could have like a reporter.
I have one. I, I was just gonna say that. So right now, if I may, Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
So right now, what we reported to the Salinas Trust in December, valued items based on, uh, and we were able to contact somebody in San Antonio who voluntarily gave us some values, John Martinez, uh, who, she does this for a living and graciously talked to Diana and helped her with some of these items, but most of these items, we were able to find the value online.
That's right.
Through vendors that that do this kind of estate sales. Uh, right now, in property value, and we, I know they're still working on this, but what we reported for um, FY twenty-three was eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-four cents. And as of now, estimated values uh, in FY twenty-four was nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-six cents for a total of one million, eight hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars in property assets. That does not include the value of the home. The value of the home right now is valued at one point two million for a total of three million, five thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars in assets that we were, were able to acquire from that home. Now, exactly what Dr. Ortiz was saying, the team has pictured everything. So the inventory that we provided the trust was, there was a photograph of each item with a description, a, a property inventory number, and a, and a, and a value amount. So the property inventory team and the donor team have really worked on this a great deal. And what we tried to do was actually repurpose everything that we could, as much as we could, where it made sense. None of us are interior designers, but I think Dr. Ortiz and her team have done an outstanding job in repurposing the, the, these items that were gifted to us. Thank you to, to the Salinas Trust and its trustees. Uh, but I also think that there are things that for us may not be of service, but may be of service to someone else. And therefore, we wanna make it available um, as all of the other donations from the trust were to the greater good in the public. And so whether it's, it's one organization, and in our case, we want it to be all organizations that, that, and certainly our, our, our employees to be able to benefit from this kind of gift. Uh, I know that that's what the trust would want us to do in discussions with their trustees, and so, uh, but because of our board policy, that's why we're bringing it to you for approval and 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 permission to move forward to start planning these events.
And if I could just add that it also helps the development team because as the community comes and sees how Laredo College has taken that gift and valued the intention and integrity of the gift and how we repurposed their gift. Donors want to be part of it. And it's, it's it's just very, it's a very, very taxing process. I cannot describe truly what the departments have gone through because it is, it, it's very difficult to explain, but I could tell you that the reward of what we see in the buildings that we've helped furnish, including, which I did not mention, lactation rooms for both colleges, for, for women that might be of need, a very comfortable room for them. We we're not gonna stop at what we've done so far. The goal will be to try to purpose, repurpose all the furnishings as best to, as we can for the college first, and then, and then move our way out. But I wanna have that opportunity or that approval, if, if, if so deemed, because there is gonna be a point where certain items, we just need to bulk together, take pictures, identify, and make them available to a nonprofit. And if we don't have this opportunity, um, then we can't move forward.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
So in the conversation that you had a little while ago, you, you mentioned we were part of that group that we were gonna be be able to see the items. I, I think that in all fairness, it should be open to everybody, and we are at the very end because then you are giving us that opportunity exclusively, and I don't believe that the Board should have that exclusive um, opportunity to go witness or or view the items. It should be everybody else, uh, like the nonprofits that you mentioned, and then, you know, the, the staff or whoever you wanna open it up to, but I don't think that we should have like an opportunity to just witness everything, just us, because that's exclusivity.
And, and I, and, and I understand your, your concern, but I will tell you that some of the items that we have still require fundraising opportunities for our college. So we make that, we were thinking that making it available to administration, to the Board, to leadership who might be able to
Purchase.
Purchase the items would be the first, not, it was not, the intent was not to give the Board the priority or leadership the priority. It was to be able to secure two thousand dollars for an item that otherwise would go for ten dollars.
It's, it's, it's aesthetics. That's all.
Yeah, yeah. And no, and I understand, and I, but, but we were just, that's why we thought about it that way, and certainly we need to think about that. And maybe what we do is we identify some items where we believe that they might be able to be fundraising um, opportunities for the college and then separate out others. But once again, that is a very subjective opinion, and I will take responsibility for that. I'm doing my very best to be as transparent as possible. Yes.
Call for the question.
And I, I do have another question before.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I have another question. So when we talk about the different opportunities that we're gonna be giving, this motion is only to open it up to nonprofits.
That's correct.
For those items that you have already selected that.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and even in those items, just know that we are taking pictures. We're giving it a value. We're presenting that to finance. And I'm sorry that this has taken so, so long. I just, it's, it's.
Chair recognizes Mr. Mirror.
Yes, I'm sorry to interrupt the discussion. Board members, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So I want to suggest an amendment to the motion. And it, it's primarily based on the gift of public funds prohibition that you find in the Texas Constitution. I, I recommend that the Board make three findings and add those findings to the motion. Now, I don't think you need to restate everything that I'm gonna say. I would just, when you amend the motion, say, add the findings that were stated by Mr. Mueller. So, yeah, here's what they are, is, one, the predominant purpose of the alternative method of disposal is to accomplish a public purpose, not to benefit private parties. And the second one is that the Board is retaining sufficient control over the disposed items to ensure the public purpose is accomplished and to protect the public's investment and make a finding that the Board, the Board will not, I'm sorry, the college district uh, shall receive a return benefit. So if you make those findings uh, with the motion, uh, I think you'll be fine.
Madam Chair, I made the motion.
I, I recognize.
So I, I amended as Mr. Mirror amended it.
Second.
Well, I had a second from Mrs. Ramos already. So I have a motion by Mr. Rangel, and he has amended it. And then I have a second by Mrs. Ramos. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
So you've, uh, you've amended the motion. Now you have to vote on the amended motion.
Okay, so.
Motion to approve.
So.
Already did it.
So he, he made the motion and then he amended it.
You amended it first.
Okay, so I motion to approve the items.
Second that.
The amended motion.
Yes.
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 And she's second.
So I have a, an amended motion by Mr. Rangel. I have a second by Mrs. Ramos. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, S.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next, next item is ten, C. Fiscal year twenty twenty-third audit. Mr. Cesar Vela.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Ramirez. For the record, Cesar Vela, VP of Finance and Administration. Uh, tonight, we have Mr. Eli Mendoza. He's partnered with Garza Gonzalez and Associates. Uh, this is the CPA firm that conducts the audit for Laredo College and also for the foundation. Uh, he'll be providing you with the report of the twenty twenty-three audit and also be going over the, uh, report on conduct of audit.
Thank you, Mrs. Vela. Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Ramirez. I'm pleased to come before you today to, uh, make a presentation on the audit. My name is Eli Mendoza. I'm a partner with Garza Gonzalez and Associates, your independent uh, auditors. And I'm pleased to report to you that we have rendered an unmodified report uh, for the college financial statements for the year ended August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And the unmodified report is the type of report you want to receive as an audited organization. In addition, the financial statements, the annual financial report, which I believe has been made available to you, includes uh, other reports and opinions that we're required to have, uh, included. Reports on, uh, compliance with laws and regulations and reports on internal control, reports also on federal programs that we audited, and I'm pleased to report to you today that we had no findings and no question cost on the, on the financial statements. As far as the, I'll just briefly make a comment on the financial condition of the, uh, college uh, for the, for the year, for this year ended August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, your uh, net assets increased by about approximately nineteen million dollars. And, uh, what that means is if you take all the assets, which would be cash, your accounts receivable, your capital assets, properties that the, the district holds, and offset that against the liabilities, bonds that you owe, accounts payable, pension, uh, funds, projected liabilities, and so forth, you are on the plus, uh, the nineteen million dollars. And so you have been on a trend where you've been improving the financial condition for the last three years. Three years ago, your, your net assets were sixty million dollars. Then you increased to eighty million. Now ninety-nine point, a little over nineteen million. So you're, uh, in excellent financial condition. The, uh, numbers include all liabilities, the, even the estimated pension liabilities that at one time caused deficits on the unrestricted net assets. Now you're on the positive side. So you're in excellent financial condition. The other report that was mentioned, the report on conduct of audit that includes our comments and recommendations to you has several recommendations which were discussed in more detail at the committee meeting yesterday. And, uh, we went over all of those. I believe, uh, the Accounting and Finance Department has a plan of action to address each of those comments. The main comment that we were communicating had to do with the inventorying of, of the capital assets, which has not been updated in the last few years, and it's on the works. I believe it's starting soon this next month. A company has been hired to come and conduct that inventory. And, uh, the area of concern for us is the federal, uh, the federal property. In the last two or three years, with all the COVID, COVID money that was received, there was a lot of property and equipment that was purchased with federal funds. There's some specific requirements. One of those is that you have an inventory at least biannually. So we don't have this as a material weakness or a significant deficiency because you still have a year to catch up to that. So we're encouraging the college and I think plan, the, the, the plan is in the works to be able to address this. And so overall, it's a good report, uh, that I bring to you as a board. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Rangel.
Yes, uh, like the gentleman said, this was discussed in finance. I motion to approve this item.
Second.
So I have a motion, and I have a second by Ms. Ramos and Mr. Delgado. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
None heard?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your, your time and appointing us as your auditors. We, as your auditors, we're independent, which means we report to you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you so much.
Also, before I go, I'd like to recognize Mr. Vela and his team. I don't know if you're gonna, you're gonna do that. But there's a couple of people here from the Finance and Account Department that worked really hard in getting the report out this year. So I'll let Mr. Vela.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll ask the team just to stand so that they can be recognized. I know they don't, I, I know they don't want to. Behind the scenes, they don't, they don't like to.
No picture?
No picture?
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciated. So Ms. Vela, you want me to go to the next item?
Yes.
Okay. So the next item is ten, D, Selection of an Investment Advisory Services Provider and Delegate to the College President, the Authority to Negotiate a Contract and Fees. Mr. Cesar Vela.
Yes, uh, board members, uh, we are asking that the Board approve the, uh, score and ranking that was, uh, computed by the Finance and Audit Committee. Uh, so we would like, uh, for approval to approve Valley View Consulting LLC as the highest ranked, uh, investment advisory services firm uh, and that they allow the College President, Dr. Ramirez, uh, to negotiate a contract with the highest ranked firm.
Okay. Sure. Chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Delgado.
And, and first and foremost, I wanna thank, uh, on behalf of the committee, thank, uh, Dr. Ramirez and Mr. Cesar Vela. I know it's been several months back and forth, several questions, several concerns, and I hope you understand that, and I'm sure you do, but from our perspective, we wanna make sure that we get all of the questions out there and make sure that we, at the end of the day, make the right decision for, not only the community, but more important for the college. Um, with regards to Valley View, uh, it's my understanding that as they were ranked, if for whatever reason, Dr. Ramirez doesn't agree with the fee schedule or anything else in regards to the level of service that Valley View will present in the negotiation of the contract, that you will go on to the second and so on and so forth.
That is correct, Mr. Delgado. So uh if we are unable to uh negotiate a contract with Valley View, uh the second highest rank was Bond Nelson. Uh and then the third one was Meter Public Funds. So again, the our our the intent or this process calls for us to try to negotiate a contract with the highest rank and then move forward if we are not unable to do that.
Chair recognizes Mr. Mirror.
Madam President and board members, my understanding that the process used to select the investment advisor is the process used for procuring professional services and you saw a uh request for qualifications and then qualifications that were submitted but not price. That's because when procuring professional services, the board looks to award or select a a provider on the basis of demonstr- demonstrated competence and qualifications. Once that selection is made, then you move to the next step, which involves negotiating a contract price for a fair and reasonable amount. And I think that uh that's the thrust of the the process here. The board selects the proposer based on demonstrated competence and qualifications, and then Dr. Ramirez would uh fulfill the second part of the the statute, which is negotiating for a fair and reasonable price.
Okay. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
So I have a motion by Mr. Delgado. Have a second by Mrs. Garcia. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, everybody. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bella.
Thank you.
Next item is ten E, resolution requesting that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approve the submission of two grant applications for a total of eighty thousand dollars in grant funding by the Laredo College Grants Office for the twenty twenty four, the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty fifth Laredo College Police Department Equipment Enhancement Enhancement Project to the State of Texas Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division, Dr. Diana Ortiz.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so before I take the motions, I need to read the resolution. Is that correct, Mr. Mirror?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So the resolution is, whereas Laredo College finds it in the best interest of the citizens of Laredo in South Texas, that the Laredo College Police Department Equipment Enhancement Project be operated for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty fifth fiscal year. And whereas the Laredo College Board of Trustees approves the submission of two grant applications by the Laredo College Grants Office in the amount of eighty thousand dollars to the State of Texas Office of the Governor for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty fifth Laredo College Police Department Equipment Enhancement Project under the following funding programs. Thirty thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty five Bullet Resistant Shield Grant Program, State of Texas E Grants, application number five oh five four eight oh one, fifty thousand dollars fiscal year twenty twenty fifth Rifle Resistant Body Armor Grant Program, State of Texas E Grants Application Number five oh five seven two zero one. Whereas Laredo College agrees to provide applicable ma- matching funds when required for the set projects. But no matching funds are required for these two grants, grant applications as noted by the State of Texas guidelines. Whereas Laredo College agrees that in the event of loss or misuse of the State of Texas Office of the Governor funds, Laredo College assures the funds will be returned to the Office of the Governor in full. Whereas Laredo College designates Dr. Minita Ramirez President as a grantees authorized official. The authorized official is given the power to apply for, accept, reject, alter, or terminate the grants on behalf of the applicant agency. Now therefore be it resolved that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approves the submission of two grant applications for a total of eighty thousand in grant funding by the Laredo College Grants Office for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty fifth Laredo College Police Department Equipment Enhancement Project to the State of Texas Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division. Duly resolved by the Board of Trustees of Laredo College on the thirty first day of January twenty twenty four. So I had a motion by Ms. Elizondo. I had a second by Mr. Rankhead. Any discussion?
Ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna stay because I wasn't here.
Oh, okay. So we have uh
There's one abstaining.
One abstaining, Mrs. Ramos.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just just to give you a little bit of background, the governor is requiring us to sign, one, you all signed this resolution, and two, the institution to sign a contract that requires us to abide by all state rules, including all it rules as they pertain and relate to all issues relating to detainees, um apprehensions, et cetera. So and and so we're doing that anyway, but but that's why we had to bring it to you to do this. Okay.
Thank you. Did you have anything else, Dan?
No.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item is number eleven, information items, eleven A. Student Success Committee Report and Spring Twenty Twenty Four Enrollment Report. Ms. Erica Benavides Garcia, Dr. Fred Solis, and Ms. Jessica Trevino.
Hello, well, we had a a meeting on um Monday, January the twenty ninth, um in which uh Ms. Indileando, Ms. Karina Elizondo, and Ms. Ramos, Jackie Ramos, uh attended. You up, would you like me just to quickly go through the notes? Okay. They uh had a questionnaire for uh faculty and for students, and they had um they had the responses. They had forty faculty members respond to this um questionnaire. And from this questionnaire, it was on the impact of eight and uh four-week courses on student success and perception. Okay. The pros were that the faculty experience, where they felt experienced in both eight-week and sixteen-week formats. They thought they made significant efforts in redesigning courses for the eight-week format, the uh showing adaptability and commitment to that. More than half, fifty-eight percent of them found the pace manageable for most students. And sixty-five percent of of these uh people that responded believed uh that there was sufficient interaction with students. The uh the cons were the the pace manageability and the understanding of subject matter. Okay, in the four-week courses, uh Mr. Doctor Eddie Berto Hernandez said he had not heard any negative comments because the the four-week courses are mainly um workforce ed. So he said it sounded very positive. On the student's side, a hundred and thirty-eight students responded um on these questionnaires. And the overall opinion, which was a majority, sixty-six percent, had a very positive uh attitude towards these courses. Um, the impact on learning were uh mixed. Okay, um thirty-three percent, a third noted improvement. A third experienced a decrease in their ability to grasp, I guess, because it was a little new to them, you know, the day-to-day. And twenty-one indicate, twenty-one percent indicated no change. Uh, the challenges in managing the workload were thirty-seven percent of these students uh said they found it very challenging, and thirty-nine percent uh found it somewhat challenging. Okay, the other twenty-two were fine. Now, what they asked for uh support services were mainly tutoring and class. Okay, of course, advising and and the writing center and and uh faculty coaching and library services, but those were the two main things that they they felt like they needed help in. We also talked about the success of passing in the retention rates, and they were high. They looked very good. And the failing, the failure rates were low. Well, that that looked really good. Okay. Um, we went on to talk about uh the new free application for the for the federal student aid. Right? And they said this is for fast bump. The page is still a bit glitchy, and they're uh experiencing outages when reporting, uh when completing the form, especially for non-US citizens. However, they're working on it, and they've attended uh six financial aid drives at the high schools. And have an additional seventeen events to attend. So they're working hard on that. Next, we went on to student life and engagement. Summer orientation will be shorter this year due to the feedback received. It will be available to those who are registered for classes, only for those registered. And we'll cover financial aid, safety, mental health, kaidonai, traditions, resources, and recreational activities. We talked about the uh the participation in the WBCA Youth Parade and Grand Parade. The theme is Reflections on the Rio Grande. And the parade entries will they will feature twenty-plus uh Laredo College students. The marketing and recruiting offices will be heading that effort. Also, another WBCA event the college will participate in is the Laredo College Fun Fest, which we talked about earlier today. And it's going to be on Saturday, February the twenty-four, twenty-fourth. This year, we'll be using the heart of the campus as opposed to just like this parking area. It's uh, I don't even exactly remember where we're at, but the parking area outside here. Um it does this is done to expose our community to our campus. It helps logistic-wise with the electricity, it could be the ATMs, freeze traps, et cetera. And it gives us more access to park moments for the for the people coming to the to the Fun Fest. Then we went on and talked about um esports. In the fall of twenty twenty-three, we attended four national competitions and came home with second place uh awards, fourth place, eighth place, and thirty-three, thirty-third place awards. Uh, this semester will al- also be offering integral uh tournaments in basketball, co-ed volleyball, table tennis, pool, co-ed softball, and indoor soccer. Next up, the rec and the esports are fitness classes. Working in conjunction with me, Espacio, and we will offer yoga, bar, HIIT, and Zumba. We're also unveiling the esports arena using Instagram, new esports, and Fusion software. Lastly, we went over uh the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Laredo College academic calendars. And ideally, uh they let us know that we do it for two years to help the recruitment of financial aid departments. We also went over the fall semesters, spring semester, may semesters, winter semesters, and summer sessions. And uh just to note that next a year, the MLK holiday will be moved to Memorial Day. Okay. And that was what we discussed.
Good job.
Very good job.
I'm a teacher, guys. I have to have all my papers and anyway.
Any questions?
No. Very good.
Our this chair recognizes Mrs. Ms. Elizondo.
In our next meeting, I think you guys should talk to her first and then let her present. Our meeting will be three minutes.
It was a very good meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We did a great job.
Madam President, Fred Solis, Vice President for Student Success and Enrollment.
Jessica Trevino, Associate Vice President of Enrollment Management.
Esteem board members, President Ramirez and colleagues. This evening, we'll be presenting the enrollment report for the spring twenty twenty-four semester. Uh, just to recap a little bit about what the spring really consists of. Spring actually started with our winter semester, and that number also contributes to the overall enrollment for the spring. Uh, it also consists of the spring section of our of our schedule that's sixteen weeks long. Uh, and then we have the two eight-week sessions that comprises spring semester schedule. Uh, we are currently still undergoing registration for the second session of spring, being that the first session of spring already started. Currently, all our current enrollment is at ten thousand and ninety-two, which is typically unheard of for a spring semester, because usually you have these numbers in the fall. But fortunately, we're we're doing okay. Uh, winter semester was up by sixty students or a ten-point sixty-eight percent increase. Our our traditional or nor- or regular LC student enrollment is up by a hundred and forty-eight students uh as of this morning, uh which is an increase of three-point five-six percent. And our dual enrollment is up by five hundred and twenty-two students for an increase of eleven percent. If we look at the distribution of how the students fare out, um today, or this semester, rather, we've actually flipped our enrollment. And what I mean by that is that fifty-one percent of our enrollment is now all dual, whereas forty-three percent are is comprising of our regular LC students on campus students. Uh, and then you have a smaller fraction of six percent that actually attended during the winter semester, which is also considered part of spring. When we look at the continuing education courses, uh just as a reminder to our board members, uh the continuing that schedule is on a quarter basis, so it enrollment happens for three months at a time uh based on their offerings. And so uh ending last quarter, which was in November, our our enrollment was up five hundred and ninety-seven students or an increase of eighty-eight percent compared to quarter one last year. Currently, we're in the midst of quarter number two. Uh, so we still have one more month, basically the month of February, to continue enrolling and offering additional courses. Uh, and so currently, right now, we're at four hundred and eighty-three students, and I'm happy to say that at the end of quarter two last year, we were at four hundred and eighty-one. So we're up two students currently right now with more yet to come because we still have one more month of enrollment. Uh, I'm gonna now pass it on to if, well, if there are no questions before I pass it on to Ms. Trevino. Okay, I'm passing on now.
Thank you, Dr. Solis. Well, Ms. Garcia, I did a great job announcing some of these updates again. Um, we are uh partnering with uh the Fun Fest out um happening here at Laredo College to actually host uh application drives on that date. So because we are already open to the community, we will be serving servicing them. Anybody interested in enrolling for the second eight weeks of the spring semester can come in on uh Saturday, February twenty-fourth, as part of the LC Fun Fest and start and go through the entire process of admissions, advising, registration, financial aid. We will be open for service. The Larama Panya Building will be open for service for the community at large. In addition to that, we will be partnering with the Laredo Independent School District on Wednesday, March twentieth, for our first Laredo College in the community event. We will be uh hoping to take a large delegation of Laredo College representation to the LISD PAC so that we open um our uh opportunities to uh LISD uh staff, faculty, uh administration, students, and the community at large, parents as well. Um, I do want to make an announcement. I know that on Monday's meeting, I mentioned that we were in a scheduled to receive financial aid applications by late February. However, just yesterday, we received an update, and that has changed to mid-March, late March. Um, what this pretty much entails, this is a big um uh situation to watch as it unfolds because we have a lot of students who are submitting financial aid applications online, but no college or university has yet received their information. We were initially notified that we would receive that information uh mid-February, then late February. Now it's mid-March with no guarantee that it will be mid-March. There are several national entities such as NASFA. Here's a link to their to their uh uh bulletin who are heading up to Washington. I know Dr. Ramirez has already reached out to the congressman to help us and assist us in urging the Department of Education that receiving this information is imperative so that we issue a the students an award letter on uh what they should be expecting in terms of financial aid for the academic year twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, what this means for us as a college is um we are going to have a very short turnaround window of when we receive that information, when we issue out a financial aid award letters, and when students and their families need to make a decision on which college to attend based on those financial aid award letters. So that turnaround is going to be um very small, a small window, and we will be uh providing you with updates as those unfold, and we continue to receive updates from the Department of Education. However, in an effort to um kind of uh ease out the process for the students who are yet to hear from financial aid, we are promoting our Palomino Scholar Dollars. Our Palomino Scholar Dollars is Our Palomino Scholar Dollars is the si- is the one-stop-shop system for all of our scholarships. That continues to be updated on a daily basis with new scholarship opportunities that we continue to streamline for all of our students. That is available uh for every student who's been admitted to the college and has access to their uh passport account. They can log in there to Palomino Scholar Dollars and answer a series, series of questions that will match them to the different scholarships available here at the college, but also nationwide. So this is an opportunity for everybody to take advantage of that and start looking at their scholarship opportunities early as we wait to see how financial aid unfolds. Any question?
Very good.
None. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is eleven B, Laredo College Timeline for Raquel Gonzalez Automotive Technology Center Expansion. Oh, I thought you had a question.
Yes.
Dr. Minita Ramirez, Mr. Sessavella.
Madam Chair.
So the chair recognizes Mr. Rangel.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I know uh Judge Martinez is the chair of uh of this uh of the building committee. I'd like to just give a quick update, just like Ms. Benavides went ahead and did. We did have a very strong conversation on the building committee. I know that there was a lot of questions posed by this board on, on, on the delay of that particular project. I believe Ms. Ramirez and her team have uh have already reached out to the construction, to the construction contractor, which is Mr. Line Decker. Also with conjunction with the architects and also with the City of Laredo. There were a lot of great uh things that were uh that come about from that, that particular conversation. Ms. Dr. Ramirez found out that now, from now on, are, we will be able to see where our permits are at online, which that is a great thing for ourselves because we're also double-checking on our own work to make sure that where, where we need to be able to be calling or if we need to be moving in a certain direction on behalf of, of the college. So that was a great thing. Um, I know Ms. Sepeda went ahead and, and made a comment. Uh, I also, I, I went to the valley this upcoming weekend. I did take a, a drive uh out there at the, at the south campus. It's very different from where we were at back in, in November, December to today. You could see the progress. Mr. Line Decker did mention that he does not foresee, but of course, you never know, uh, any delays. Right now, we're looking at February of twenty twenty-five as a completion date. So that's very good for us. And I know we did talk about how, what the importance of that facility is for our, for our entity. Uh, we have kids that pretty much are waiting to get into, into that facility. So that was a great thing. The, the protective service facility renovation, right now, uh, Mr. Pies went again, went ahead and gave a, um, an update. That's construction.
That's the next.
Oh, yeah. I, I was gonna touch on eleven B and C if you, you don't mind, Madam Chair.
Let me just read eleven C, Laredo College Construction Update. Mr. Vangit.
No. Yeah. Expedite, try and expedite. So uh, Mr. Pies went ahead and gave a, a great presentation on that. Right now, uh, it's an ongoing project. Uh, it's set to be on December twenty twenty-four. Uh, so we are set on that. The, on the main cap is the MFA HVAC project. Uh, we are looking at uh July twenty twenty-four as a completion. The Lamar Bunny Vergara is coming along. They went ahead and they started on September twenty-second. Uh, final completion should be on November twenty-second. So that's a great thing as well. The uh Recica Building uh went ahead and started November sixth and should be uh November, November sixth, twenty twenty-three should be finishing on December fifth, twenty twenty-four. Um, the Moore Building uh final completion date should be June third, twenty twenty-four for, for, for us. And the old post uh guardhouse should be coming for board approval on May twenty twenty-four. And last one is the P fourteen, the expansion on painting for the facility is ongoing. Mr. Pies went ahead and showed a couple of pictures. We were kind of shocking because we saw like the lime green. And we were like, what's going on? But he went ahead and he clear, he, he clarified that that was a primer. So uh, it was a great meeting overall. So hopefully, uh, that's the updates that I have on behalf of the meeting that we had. Any questions? Go ahead.
Any questions?
Uh, no.
Okay. Let me go to the next item.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Vangit.
You're welcome.
Eleven D.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
I know, just gotta go with it. Notification of the Serving of Alcoholic Bever- Beverages at the Laredo Theater Guild International Production of Hand to God at the Shoebox Theater, T thirty. As per Laredo College Board Community and Governmental Relations Policy, GDA Local, Community Expression and Use of College Facilities Conduct on College District Premises, Dr. Diana Ortiz.
Actually, me.
Oh, Dr. Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is a, a notification to you all. Uh, they had a very successful program. The Hand to God ran for two weekends in a row and, and all shows were sold out. So it, it was very successful and they did a great job. Um, one of the requirements by our board policy is that I notify you, they did serve wine uh during the intermission. And so I, I needed to tell you all, in the future, we've asked them to let us know ahead of time so that we could bring it to the board uh before. You don't have to approve it. It's just notification, but I'd like to notify you before it happens and not after. So um, my apologies for that, but we'll, we've made note of that and we've let them know as well to, to please bring it to us before.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Eleven E is notification of employee compensation during emergency closure as per Laredo College Policy, DEA Local Compensation and Benefits Compensation Plan, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Yes, Madam Chair, and this also is for your notification during the bad weather storm. We, if you all recall, uh, we did give uh all students and employees one more day as all other educational entities in our, in our area did. Uh, and because of the emergency, uh, we, we needed to notify you that we're gonna play, pay employees for the day that they did not come to work. Um, the pay period ends today and therefore uh you all needed to be notified of that because it does continue as part of the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
All right.
So the next item is number twelve, Executive Session, and we have three items that I need to read. We have twelve A, Level Three Grievance Hearing filed by a Laredo College non-exempt employee. As per Laredo College Board Policy, DGBA Local Personnel Management Relations, Employee Grievances, Close Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four. Twelve B is Due Process Termination Hearing filed by a Laredo College exempt staff member in response to recommendation for termination as per Laredo College Board Policy, DMAA Local Term Contracts, Termination Mid Contract, Close Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four. Twelve C is Deliberations on the Level Three Grievance Hearing and Due Process Termination Hearing as per Laredo College Port, uh, Board Policy, DMAA Local Term Contracts, Termination Mid Contract and Laredo College Board Policy, DMAA Local Term Contracts, Termination Mid Contract, Close Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four. So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, the second by Mr. Rangel to go into Executive Session. So at this time, uh, we're going into Exec- Executive Session. The time is thirty, seven thirty-four, and the board will adjourn into Executive Session pursuant to Sections five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four of the Texas Government Code to discuss agendas, items twelve A, twelve B, and twelve C.
Madam Chair. Um, we can call for the question.
What question? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Got a vote.
Yes.
So all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
There you go.
Eddie Post, sorry. Thank you.
Didn't see this.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Like that one is hot.
Oh.
It's because it's hot. Because it gets hot and I get really like flustered. Yes. Okay, natural. It's because it's hot.
We have reconvened from closed session, the time is now eleven fourteen PM and the board took no action in executive session. The first item is for discussion and possible action is thirteen A, level three grievance filed by Laredo College non-exempt employee. As per board policy DGBA local personnel management relations employee grievance.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion?
Do I have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to positively revert Mr. Torres evaluation based on the information provided. In order to reflect a positive note and a willingness and compromise from both parties. To enhance the work environment of this department. We, I am here to support staff and employees and I believe that at this time it will be appropriate for, to move forward. With this and start from scratch pretty much, so I think that a motion to revert his evaluation will properly. Or adequately satisfy both parties.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a question. Mr. Muir, can, is that a proper motion based on what was presented? Or do I have to make a second?
To grant some sort of relief and so that would be something you could do with a level three. Grievance of this type. You know, I think there should be discussion if there's any kind of clarification that board members need.
I repeat, can I repeat?
If there's a second, then there would be discussion, if there's no second, then the motion.
So the motion was made, I didn't get a second.
I got a second.
Oh, but. Oh, okay, so I have a second, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Chair recognizes Mr. Ramirez.
Can you explain to me what exactly you're trying to say?
I would like to make a motion to positively revert Mr. Torres evaluation on the information that was provided. To reflect a positive note and the willingness and compromise from both parties to move forward from here on. I understand that that was not. Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
My question is to legal counsel, that was not one of the questions or that was not one of the remedies that the grieving party requested. If you're asking me to change a supervisor's evaluation, because I think that's what you're asking me to do, change the supervisor's evaluation. That is not one of the requests from the grieving party, I'm just stating them.
Okay, then can I change my motion?
Wait, Mr. Muir? No, sir.
I was asking for clarification.
Right.
Yeah, you know. I think, I think that's a good point, if that deals with some of the relief that was requested, then it would be fine, if it doesn't, that's not what the grievance is asking for.
Okay, so Mr. Algett is requesting to speak. Mr. Muir? Can he speak or can I deny him?
The board conducted the hearing in executive session and concluded it and. The board heard what the relief was, it's up to the chair whether or not to allow that.
Up to you.
So I deny it. So we have a motion and we have a second now. Ms. Elizondo made the motion, she wants to change it, so I have to ask for the vote.
Call for a vote on amending the Mr. Torres evaluation.
Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote, Mr. Muir.
For amending.
Positively amend Mr. Torres.
Now you're giving a totally different.
Motion to positively revert Mr. Torres evaluation on the information provided. In order to reflect a positive note and a willingness and compromise from both parties to enhance that department works environment.
Okay, so it's already been cleared, so I'm gonna ask for the vote, all in favor with that motion?
Comment.
We're still in discussion, okay.
That was not in the remedy, none of the two, like the evaluation was never. Like was never in any of the two.
That's her motion.
She can motion that is what.
With.
So that's her motion, so we need to take the vote. Yes, Ms. Lando.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I made the second just so that we could discuss it to get some clarification on that. Then that's why I asked Mr. Muir if that was allowed or not before making the second. Well, I would like to hear from Mr. Muir, first he said yes and then if I understood correctly, then he said no.
Yeah, you know, I'd be happy to say that, so if that is not. Not part of the relief that was, and that's not what the grievance is asking for, wouldn't be appropriate.
Wait, I have not given you permission to speak, sir. So what are you saying, Mr. Muir, because Mr. Algett wants to speak?
Yeah, I think the chair has already recognized him and advised him that he was not able to speak, and I think that's the chair's ruling.
But your question, Cindy, did he answer your question?
I think he answered my question saying that was not a proper motion, so I would. Retract my second, just because I, I'm in favor of some of it, but not all of it, the way it was worded, so.
Can she amend it?
No. That's your motion. So she rescind the second. Do I have anybody else I will second?
Not part of the.
Okay, so the motion dies. So now, do I have another motion? Okay, so no motion was made and no action has been taken on that grievance. So I move to the next grievance. Which is thirteen B, recommendation to terminate the employment of a Laredo College exempt staff member. As per college board policy DMA A local term contracts termination mid-contract. Do I have a motion?
I move to deny the recommendation.
I have a motion by Ms. Liendo, do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second by Ms. Elizondo, any discussion? So I'll call for the vote, all in favor? One, two, three? Not in favor?
Not in favor of what, of her motion?
Of her motion. So it's one, two, three, four, five, so the motion is denied. So do I have another? So do I have another motion? Oh, that's it, I'm sorry.
So, but you need a motion too?
So Mr. Muir, if the motion did not pass? Do.
If the motion didn't. Not pass, that means that it failed and that there's no denial of the recommendation, but to terminate the employee's employment, it has to take. Affirmative action, it has to be a motion made to terminate and it has to be seconded and it has to pass. Because it's the board sole province to terminate the contract employee.
Okay. So do I have a recommend?
To terminate, you have to vote to do so.
So do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I motion to follow through with the administration's recommendation on termination.
So I have a motion, do I have a second? So I have a second by Ms. Vela.
Comment.
Any, I'm sorry?
Comments.
Any discussion? Mr. Langhead?
All I have to say is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is board policy correct? Dr. Ramirez?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion, Ms. Elizondo?
Just for the record, I strongly believe that another remedy could have been sought on this particular issue. I believe that termination was excessive, excessive punishment for this particular case. And I strongly believe that Ms. Rocha made reasonable attempts to follow through the chain of command. Um, and I strongly believe that Miss Rocha made reasonable attempts to follow through the chain of command. And Miss Rocha has exposed uh, uh, her commitment to this institution for ten years. And I think that's something that we all need to take into account when we make decisions like this. She exposed a high level of respect and, and love for what she does. And, and thank you for, for everything that you have done for the college, Miss Rocha.
Any, any other discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand so I can see. One, two, one, two, three, four, five. Motion passes. Next item I have is president's remarks, fourteen A, campus police personnel and travel reports, Doctor Minita Ramirez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the record, because of time, I, I think I'll forego my, my information items, the.
Fourteen A and fourteen B?
Yes, ma'am. The, the police report is in your package, so you have that already. Um, and there's um, we can forego till next month.
Okay. Uh, item number fifteen, next meeting date is Thursday, February the twenty second, twenty twenty four at six P M. That's our regular Board of Trustees meeting. Saturday, February the twenty fourth, twenty twenty four at twelve, from twelve P M to five P M. We have the Laredo College Fun Fest. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some.
So I have a motion by Mister Delgado, second by Mrs. Ramos. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.